All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:00 PM. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun for September 23rd, 2014, to order. If you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would all bow your heads with me for a prayer, please. Eternal God, we give thanks for you, for giving us another day here on earth, God. I pray for those that are in conflicts overseas and those refugees that may not have a place to be. We find ourself, as the US, in many conflicts, and I pray that you will lead us through and keep us safe and keep those overseas serving on our behalfs safe. I pray for the Town of Rising Sun. I pray for this elected body, that we continue to stay healthy and that we continue to move the Town of Rising Sun forward to the future and that we serve our citizens and the residents of this town to the best of our ability. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
First order of business is approval of minutes from September 9th, 2014. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes from this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Could I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Walken?
Here.
Commissioner Autry?
Here.
Commissioner Scully?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. We're gonna move into business meeting items. The first thing on our business meeting items is Resolution 2014-07, which is the General Obligations Bond and Anticipation Notes. Town Administrator, if you wanna handle that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We'll try to get through this pretty quick, 'cause to some degree it is straightforward, but yet at the same time, you have an obligation to give it its due diligence, because you're talking about the expenditure of public funds. What you have before you, and I'm waiting for it to load up on the screen here, and this is part of the information packet that was sent out to you earlier this week, and I wanted to bring the community up to speed to try to dispel some things that had happened in the past and misinformation that got out there. To back up, as everybody knows, the town had bought on a $13 million bond process to build a new wastewater treatment facility. And in order to... The Town of Rising Sun didn't have $13 million sitting around to go build a sewer plant, so it had to get financing. And it secured that financing through the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA. However, USDA does not provide that funding until the project is done. In other words, it's not like you get a loan to build your house and you call the bank and say, "I need to pay the contractor, you know, $50,000 for putting a new foundation in." It doesn't work that way. We would have to pay the money ourselves, and at the end of the project, USDA would reimburse the town for that. Obviously, again, the town doesn't have $13 million sitting around to pay the contractor, so we had to get what would be considered a bridge loan or a construction loan. And the way to do that is we would get involved in bands or bond anticipation notes, which is basically short-term financing that the individual or entity that provides you the short-term financing has a guarantee that that financing is gonna be borrowed out in the future. And so, we got this short-term financing from PNC Bank with the guarantee from the United States Government, USDA, that they would pay PNC back at the conclusion of drawing out all of those funds. So the original financing was for roughly $13.1 million. And there was a maturity on that financing from PNC that said that we essentially had to have all the money spent and paid PNC back by November of 2014. As most people are aware, we had a lot of delays at the beginning of the project, well beyond the town's control, based upon regulatory approvals. And we had some issues because of the unique nature of this project, where some of the regulatory agencies were struggling with the approval process. And then, most recently, without getting into a lot of litigation stuff that we cannot talk about, the contractor was not able to finish the project, and we had to go out and get a new contractor to finish the project. That potentially extended our project about another year. If you recall, I just got done stating that the PNC loan financing had to be done by November of 2014. USDA has agreed to pay all the money that we have borrowed from PNC to date, which in round numbers is about $8 million. And in your packet, you see the recommendation from Davenport and Associates. They essentially referenced that number. So USDA has agreed to pay off that $8 million of money, and then PNC has essentially agreed to rewrite the remaining amount of money that's needed to complete the project under a new loan with new parameters and a new timeframe. And that timeframe is essentially a year that we have to... We're gonna get new money from PNC to be able to finish the project, and the project needs to be done by September of 2015. Just to answer a question, why didn't we get the loan longer than one year? Number one, we don't need to, because the contractor... The new contractor has been moving along very aggressively and has assured us that the project will be substantially completed by July of 2015, with a final tone-on and give us the keys in September of 2015. So there's no reason to take out any money and be paying interest any time longer than the amount of time that we needed. Also, USDA, at that time, we have to have all of USDA's commitments spent by September of 2015, too. So all those timelines are coming together. So what you essentially have before you is... You're not... Tonight's resolution is not about approving more money for the project. That's what's important to note. This is not increasing the amount of money that the town set out to borrow back in 2011. The project is not costing any more money. This is not gonna have an impact on the rates that the residents pay. There's no reason to raise rates. We have... Our rate study was sufficiently done in the past. We're covered for the $13.1 million. We're essentially changing the format in which we are getting that money. The other good thing is that, at the end of the day, we're the residents, and it's important to say the residents, 'cause they're the ones that are paying for this. The residents of Rising Sun are actually going to be financing less money in the long run because of the $2.7 million grant that we are getting from MDE. So although this thing got really cattywampus at times, is always a word to use, although it got cattywampus, it's actually come out for a good thing for the Town of Rising Sun, because now, as we've talked about in the past, we qualify for $2.7 million of grant money. So at the end of the day, that is a huge win for the residents of Rising Sun. So this is basically a straightforward resolution. The important thing is, it's not gonna require any rate changes. The interest rate on the PNC loan is gonna be slightly different than what we are paying, but it's really irrelevant, because we're only paying interest on the loan, and the amount of money is negligible, because it's gonna be borrowed out by USDA in a year's time. And plus, we're not going to be using all of the $4.9 million listed, because we have grant money from MDE that's coming in. It's important to note, to tie that all together, that the contract price of the new contractor is right about $4.1 million. Don't quote me on that, it's in the low fours there. And as you can see, we are financing for $4.9 million. So it's a lot to digest, but it's good for the town at the end of the day. So we have a quick resolution here, number 2014-07, titled "General Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes Series 2014: Approving Financing Proposal." A resolution concerning a non-revolving line of credit financing provided by PNC Bank, National Association, the bank, made for the purpose of approving the financing proposal provided by the bank, a copy of which is attached here into Exhibit A. Whereas, the Commissioners of Rising Sun, Maryland, the town, is a municipal corporation duly organized and existing under the laws of the state of Maryland pursuant to a charter adopted in accordance with Article XIE of the Constitution of Maryland and Section 4-201 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. Whereas, pursuant to the Resolution 2010-14... This was a resolution adopted previously, adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the town and effective on August 10th, 2010. The original note resolution, the town is authorized to issue general obligation bond anticipation notes in the principal amount of up to $20 million, whereas pursuant to Section 12 of Article 31 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as repealed and replaced by Section 19-212 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland on November 5th, 2010, the town issued its $13.1 million general obligation bond anticipation note series 2010 note for the purpose of providing all or a portion of the funds necessary to pay the cost of various water, sewer, and other public improvements for the town authorized by Section C-17B of the Town Charter. Capitalize interest on the 2010 note and the payment of these costs of issuing the 2010 note. The 2010 note is intended to be refinanced with general obligation bonds issued by the town to the United States Department of Agricultural Development Office, USDA. Whereas, the 2010 note was scheduled to mature November 15, 2013, the original maturity date. Due to delays unanticipated by the town, including but not limited to the redesign of the project, the town was advised that the project would not be completed prior to the original maturity date. As such, the town requested that the bank, as a whole of the 2010 note, agree to extend the original maturity date by one year on May 15, 2013. Pursuant to a note modification agreement, the bank extended the original maturity date to November 15, 2014, the maturity date. Whereas, due to additional delays unanticipated by the town, including but not limited to the termination by the contractor, the contract for the project, the project will not be complete prior to the maturity date. Whereas, a portion of the 2010 note will be refinanced by USDA prior to completion of the project. The remaining costs of the project will be financed by the 2014 note, which upon completion of the project will also be refinanced by general obligation bonds issued by the town to USDA. Whereas, pursuant to the original note resolution, Section 19-212, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Section C-17 in the Town Charter, the Board of Commissioners of the town have determined to issue an additional series of its general obligation bond anticipation notes as Series 2014, in the principal amount of up to $6,900,000 or such lower amount as is actually borrowed for the purpose of interim financing and refinancing of the project from proceeds of a non-revolving drawdown line of credit provided by the bank, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the bank's proposal dated August 22nd, 2014, as modified in accordance with the authority granted in the original note resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun, Maryland, that Section 1, it is hereby found and determined to be in the best interest of the town to issue the 2014 notes and approve the line of credit with the bank. Section 2, the 2014 note shall be issued as detailed and in accordance with the original note resolution as attached hereto as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun pass, approve, and adopt this resolution on this 23rd day of September, 2014. I apologize for reading that, but it's very important, due to legal and the financial implications, that we follow exactly the letter of what we're supposed to do, so we needed to have it formally documented.
I move we adopt Resolution 2014-07.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this general obligation bond anticipation note?
It's not discussion, but it's just a comment. I wanna make comment on the Exhibit A, which is the terms provided by PNC Bank, and just express my appreciation to PNC Bank for the fact that fees we waive, with the exception of normal and reasonable legal documentation and review costs. So I appreciate PNC's partnership and their trust in the town for providing this financing.
Mayor, I also think it's important, I guess for transparency, there is a typo on the Davenport memo on Page 2, the second board point under the heading that says "PNC Line Credit." It states, "The credit line extends to September 15, 2015. The balance outstanding will be due on that date." If you refer to the actual term sheet, I believe on Page 1, it clearly states in the term sheet that it extends until September 30th of 2015, so I just wanted to make that clarification for the record.
Okay, so we will make it with the correction for September 30th, 2015. Do you wanna do that as an amendment to this? Town Administrator, you wanna do this?
Well, you're not really signing the Davenport letter. The term sheet is correct, so there's no need to make any amendment.
Okay. Any more discussion regarding the general obligation bond anticipation note? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Thank you, Town Administrator. I do have one more thing under business meeting items that is not on the agenda. I had asked our town clerk to put it on the agenda, but I guess there was something going on. She may have thought I was gonna do it under Mayor's Report, and that is a nomination to our Economic Development Committee. Tonight, I am going to move forward with nominating a person that has been a longstanding member of this community. Myself and Commissioner Warnock spoke to him in depth about getting involved. We both wanted him to be involved very badly, because he is a pillar of this community. So with that said, I am going to put forward Bud McFadden's name to join the Rising Sun Economic Development and Community Revitalization Committee. Can I have a motion for that?
So motioned.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I just wanted to say a discussion point to thank Mr. McFadden for agreeing to serve on this committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thank you. Citizens' input tonight. Right now, we have no speakers. Does anyone wanna speak tonight? Hearing none, we'll move from citizens' input into the Mayor's Report. My report will be pretty brief tonight. I wanted to say that I was very happy to have all of the Commissioners join me on two days last week, on Wednesday and on Friday, to open Triangle Dog Park. It was a great event. I was very happy to see all of the mayors there, from Sally Teague to Judy Cox to Tom Mummy, as well as the Parks Commissioners, moving back from Debbie Craig, joining us, because some people may not realize that their work really set the movement forward to do Triangle Park. When I came in as Parks and Recreation Commissioner, I took over a plan and decided to move forward with that plan. We made a couple of changes for it, but I think dealing with some of the weather delays we had, and also dealing with people may not realize that it was actually two projects in one, with the Octavera Watershed handling their part of the project with one type of contractor, and then another contractor coming in and handling the Dog Park project. But I'm very excited to say that Triangle Dog Park is complete. I have seen many, many people down there enjoying the park. When we opened it for the public on Friday, we had a bunch of dogs that came down and enjoyed spending time there. I did wanna say a comment that came across one day to me about this board and how... The comment was kinda like the look of this board, or how we run things. And I think that it is very imperative that we show that we are a team. We have all shown up at events that necessarily you all didn't have to show up at, but you've taken time out of your day to be there, to show support, to come off as a team. And I think that that's the best way to move Rising Sun forward, is us working together. So I'm very happy that you all have decided to do that. I did wanna say that, as far as economic development goes, I sent out a letter to all of the building's owners across the street, across the Main Street area, inviting them to join me in October for a sit-down roundtable, to discuss ideas with them on how they can improve the aesthetic appeal of their buildings, and also what the Town of Rising Sun can do to help them fill their vacant storefronts. I think that that is very imperative, and we will be moving forward with that in October. I also wanted to add that I have been working with Desiree Davis, who I asked to emcee the Halloween Fall Spooktacular that we are going to be having in October. And we are moving forward with a lot of things that are gonna be really great for kids and families. Desiree has been working to get a lot of people to donate their services, and I have been working with local businesses, asking them to donate. So I'm very happy that Armstrong is one of our first donors. I called Armstrong, and they were more than willing to help support the Spooktacular. They donated $300, which will go towards the purchase or the cost of having our pony rides again this year. So I'm very excited about that. We have a lot of different events coming, so make sure you mark your calendars for the Spooktacular, which is October the 24th. So... And that is going to be...
It's the 18th.
Yeah, it's the 18th, excuse me, October 18th. And that is from 11 to 4 during the day, so I'm excited about that. I did wanna say one more thing, which is, I was reached out by the Executive Director of Donate Life, Maryland, who asked me if it would be okay if they shared Rising Sun's efforts for promoting organ donation and Benjamin Larson's story to help all Marylanders make the decision to be organ donors. Today, they shared on their Facebook page Ben's story and some of the Town of Rising Sun's efforts, so I'm very excited about that. And moving forward, I'm glad that we have the support of our citizens in this campaign. I've had a lot of people come up to me and say thank you for bringing it up. So each September, we'll make sure to do this for them. I did attend the Fall MML Conference, which was a great event. I learned and took a lot of classes, which necessarily were brand-new this year, so I was very excited to see that. Some of them were very informative. And I was actually appointed into the Maryland Mayors Association officially. The Maryland Mayors Association was formed in 1994, and believe it or not, I am their youngest mayor that they've ever had be a part of that association, so I am glad to be a part of that. I'm gonna move forward into staff reports. Chief Peterson? Oh, correct. Thank you for mentioning that, Town Administrator. I did also wanna say a big thank you. We didn't say it at the Dog Park. I spoke about all of the donors that we had. I mentioned about Lowe's donating a lot of block and material to the Dog Park. But I also wanted to say a big thank you to KCI for donating not only $1,000 towards our Boardwalk project, but also a lot of engineering costs that saved us money and surveying costs. So a big thank you to KCI for doing that. Chief Peterson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. During the period of September 10th through September 23rd, we responded to 249 calls for service. In your packet, there is a comparison for 2013 and 2014. You've got the first nine months, well, the first eight months and a portion of the ninth month. But what you can see is a lot of activity by the officers. One notable month is July, when we had 619 incidents that we responded to, as compared to 439 the year prior. So the officers are out, they are active, they're being seen, but we still cannot do it alone. And again, I ask for the public's help. If you see something that doesn't look right, please say something. We had the incidents in our park just recently again, and those places, you know, people tend to gather. If you see something there, please say something to the police. Give us a call. You can remain anonymous. We need to make sure this ends. Our next drug take-back is scheduled for this Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is something that's important to us in the Police Department. It gets the prescription medications off the street. It helps reduce the possibility of addiction. So if you have some unwanted, unused drugs, we are available to take those off your hand. That will be on Saturday, the 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And lastly, last Friday, we responded to an incident at Buck's that has created a lot of conversation throughout town. The conversation seems to be headed towards a gang war between outlaw motorcycle gangs. We were able to identify one individual who was wearing a outlaw motorcycle gang insignia inside of the establishment when we responded for disorderlies. The other people that were involved were not vetted to be gang members at this time. We have reached out to our allied law enforcement agencies as far away as Virginia and Charles County, Maryland, to see what information we can gather on one of the individuals that was involved. But to say that it is a gang problem, that's not something that we can do or will do at this point. What we do ask, and I'd said it a few seconds ago, if you see something strange, say something. Give us a call. The establishment has taken some steps to not allow individuals in the establishment with any type of insignia that they believe would be associated with an outlaw motorcycle gang. So we are trying to get a handle on this. I do not perceive it to be a problem. We have made all the agencies in the East Coast region aware of it, and if something more comes about, I will be passing that information on. But as of today, it's not the huge problem that is being rumored in the town. Is there any questions?
Chief, I think the only thing that I would add also is something that I wrote last week in a column that I wrote for the Cecil Guardian, which was that you can approach our officers also. You don't...
Absolutely.
If you see something, say something means not only do you have the ability to call 911, but our officers are taking steps to be approachable in the community and scene. So if you wanna walk up to a cruiser or speak to an officer, do it. They're not gonna chop your head off, they're not gonna scream at you or yell at you, they're gonna care about your concern.
We're all human. We all are compassionate people. We care about the community we serve. Therefore, we're gonna take the time to listen to anything you have to tell us. Okay? So if you see something, say something.
Thank you, Chief Peterson. Before we go into the Town Administrator's Report, believe it or not, I misstepped my notes. I did wanna add that the elected body joined me for a few minutes before the beginning of this meeting to sign. I signed this statement. We had a representative from the Guard who came, and it says, "At the town meeting on July 22nd, 2014, the Mayor and Commissioners signed the proclamation of support for the Guard and Reserve of the State of Maryland. The Town of Rising Sun is very supportive of employee and reemployment for those serving in our country in peace and war. That signed statement will help increase public understanding and provide support to employees who are so engaged in service to this country." So we are getting the actual proclamation framed right now, but we will have it, and we will place it downstairs in Town Hall for everyone to see. She was very excited to come and get that signed. And if you would like a copy of her newsletter, the town clerk has some. So I thank them very much for coming out. So moving forward, I'm gonna go into the Town Administrator's Report.
Commissioner Autry, do you want me to do the paving now or under your report?
Let's go ahead and do it now.
The town has a long history of dating back to the early 2000s. Some of the land development projects that occurred in the town have not always ended up resulting in something that is of benefit to the Town of Rising Sun or even some of the residents that are living in some of those developments. And it has to do with some developers walking away from completing the projects, and according to our town codes and recognized engineering... completing the projects in accordance to our town codes and recognized engineering expectations. And it's been an issue that as long as I've been here since 2007, rightfully so, the residents in these communities get very upset because they're driving, in some cases, on roads that are just littered with potholes. And to clarify something, one of the reasons why the town in the past has been hesitant to move forward to correct any of those items is because legally and by right, the developers are responsible for those repairs that are to be done. And if the town were to come in and have done them in the past, you're talking a significant amount of taxpayers' money. And let me just put that in perspective, because sometimes perspective is good, is the town collects about $800,000 a year in real estate tax. And when you look at just taking a standard street in our community and paving it, whether it be a stretch of the Summer Hill Development or Rising Hills or Ryan Drive, you could be talking upwards of well over $100,000, maybe $200,000 just to do a simple stretch of paving. And so when you're only bringing in $800,000 a year of real estate tax, that's where that money comes from. And so with the infrastructure underground not having been certified, the stormwater piping, in some cases, the county has not signed off on stormwater retention ponds, for the town at that time to move forward to restore those roads without exploring every option of trying to make the developers accountable for that could potentially just really been throwing a significant amount of taxpayers' money right out the window. So the town has taken steps over the years to alleviate some of the strains on the residents. For instance, normally, a community will not plow streets, won't provide various types of services in a development until the development has been dedicated, which means taking the responsibility is transferred from the developer to the town. The Town of Rising Sun, back in 2007, started plowing streets and putting salt down and stuff like that and not leaving it up to the developer with the idea that if the developer hasn't paved the street, they're most likely not going to worry about plowing the street. So the town has used taxpayers' money to lessen the burden for residents living in those particular sections. So here we are now, basically seven years later, and we still have a couple of projects that we're now going to have to take it to the next step, which is potentially going to lead to legal action. But prior boards in the past, I remember Commissioner Walker and I had discussions with this when he was the Streets and Sidewalks Commissioner. It's very difficult to tell residents in some of these neighborhoods that you just have to continue to tear your car up on some of these streets. So this actually was an initiative that started under Commissioner Walker when we had some meetings with one of the particular developers, and we told them that we're going to give you to the end of this year to pave the Maple Heights Development. If you do not, the town is going to move forward with that and we will recover our fees any way that we can going forward. We made that offer to the developer, and to this date, the developer has not moved forward with that. And so I think collectively, past boards and this board all agree that we just don't want to go another year with this road the way it is. We are getting to the point where some of the actual infrastructure that residents don't see underground is potentially being impacted by all these imperfect surfaces and drainage that's getting in because the roadway was never finalized. So in moving forward with the spirit of that, we've asked our engineer to provide us with a simple cost estimate to repave the unpaved section of the Maple Heights Development, and that would basically be Maple Heights Drive from Main Street up to where the paving, the good paving for the apartment complex began. So that first turn is Maple Leaf...
Maple Heights Lane, Maple Leaf Drive.
Yeah, Maple Heights Lane. Basically, we would be paving up Maple Heights Drive to maybe about 200 feet past Maple Heights Lane, and then down Maple Heights Lane to right where the townhouses begin. The developer did pave that portion because, quite frankly, he needed to sell homes, and he wasn't going to sell homes with it being, you know, a pothole through there. So he did pave the street in there. However, there are areas of that street that are collapsing, deteriorating, and the town has taken the position that even though the developer paved those sections in the past, the town never took dedication on that. And the fact that all of the repairs were not done properly, that any damage that has resulted to that is going to be on the developer. So the picture I'm painting is that, my impression is that the Board of Commissioners want to move aggressively at resolving this issue caused by the developer, and is also going to be moving aggressively to recover that. So what I have here is a proposal from our engineer for a cost of $96,533.75 to repave those sections of Maple Heights Drive and to fix some of the pavement that is collapsing, I shouldn't say collapsing, but it is depressed, and it's creating large areas that freeze and collect water and freeze in the wintertime. This may be a little bit of putting the cart in front of the horse, because to some degree, you might want to get in and do some repairs or do some things to the underground infrastructure system. But we do believe that we have a couple of years before that will actually meet critical mass. And with the sewer plant well on its way to being constructed, we believe that there is a value in the second part of Maple Heights for either this developer or a future developer to want to move forward. And at that point, it would be our intention to collect the money that you're considering to expend tonight and to make the current developer or a future developer be responsible for making those final repairs. So the proposal here is for $96,533.75. To answer the question on the budget, we basically are paying $152,657 a year on other paving projects to include the $650,000 paving project that we just completed. But we also balanced our budget this year, anticipating that we may have to get aggressive and pave Maple Heights ourselves. So we do have a balanced budget that has $100,000 set aside to pave the Maple Heights Development. So this estimate is actually coming in slightly less than what the budgeted amount is. The other thing is, within this proposal, there is approximately about $15,000 of items that potentially our personnel could do ourselves to lower the cost, or at the very least, we could do some of this smaller stuff with a local contractor if time becomes an issue and probably still be able to do it a little bit cheaper than the paving contractor has proposed. So the worst thing out of this is that you're going to have to pay $96,533.75, but you have a balanced budget that projected an expenditure of $100,000. And again, that could be even less if we actually do some of the things in-house. The contractor said that they could be out there in two weeks to begin the paving project. They're estimating about maybe a week to complete the project, a little over a week. Time is of the essence, because as the temperature continues to drop, the blacktop plants will start to ratchet down the production of blacktop. That usually does occur around mid-October, depending upon the weather. So we have a very small window in which to move on this. So that concludes my background information.
You know, another couple of things that have happened with that road is the damage to the town's equipment, who's been plowing that each year, has been thousands of dollars. And then also, they can't properly plow that road in the wintertime when we've had bad snow like we did this year because of the rises and depressions in that road. They have to negotiate that, and they can't plow it properly. It's also unsafe for the large amount of schoolchildren we have walking to the bus stop along with their parents and some elderly people who don't have cars that walk to Martins and the other businesses in town. And I've gotten, just in the past few months, a lot of emails from residents in that area. I've talked to a lot of residents back in the apartments who also have to use those bad sections of road. So also, with the way the weather is changing quickly, we are in a critical position here to where it's not something we can let go one more winter and kick it farther down the road. It's been kicked too far down the road already. So I agree that it's something that we need to move on now. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $96,533.75 to move forward with the paving and repair of Maple Heights Lane and half of Maple Leaf Drive.
I'll second that.
The motion's been moved and seconded to approve the paving of Maple Heights Lane and Maple Leaf Drive. Any discussion?
Also, Mr. Mayor, this is not just a paving. There is repair that needs to be done first. A lot of patching has been done over the years of sections where the infrastructure is that's deteriorating. So it's not just going to be a quick paving job and they're done. There is some repair that has to be done. And then also, we've had a lot of trouble with, like I said, we have a neighborhood there that's grown quite extensively of children, children that were not even born when we moved there, that are now getting on school buses, and each year, that number increases. So we've always had a struggle with what to do with those bus stops at the corner of 273 and Maple Heights Lane.
That was actually going to be my next question.
And the safety for the children. So this is something that we could hopefully, it would help us move forward with some type of a compromise there, something we could do different with the school buses and the large group of children that catch several buses there each day. And also, we have a little section of sidewalk there, right before you get to the bus stop, that's caving in, that needs to be repaired. That's some of the things Calvin was talking about, we could do in-house. So it's not just a car issue. There's a lot of safety issues here also that need to be addressed. And as he said, it's been over nine years of weather tearing up those roads, those sidewalks, that it just can't be put off anymore.
And if I remember correctly, Commissioner Althanreth, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I've been approached by a couple of people that own businesses there, and their concerns regarding when it is a bus drop-off or bus pickup, that there's a large gathering of vehicles that park there along that way, because the bus does not come into the apartment complex that's back there. If I remember correctly, a few years back, a child was actually hit there.
Two or three, at least.
At least two children have been hit. And that is due to the fact that there is low visibility, because it's basically becoming a gathering place for vehicles.
It's becoming a parking lot down at that corner along Maple Leaf Drive, Maple Heights Lane, and into the entrance of the bank there also. So it is creating quite a hazard. And it's not just children who don't want to walk. There's parents who pick up their children, then have to take them to after-school activities and all. So this is an ancillary issue to just fixing the road, but we've...
I'm hopeful, just like you, that the school bus will actually start driving back there once the roads are...
And we've discussed, you know, Commissioner Warnock and I have talked in the past about the possibility of school buses coming into Maple Heights Lane and being able to go down and around the circle and come back out, which is, we hope, is a possibility in the future. But this is a development that has room for a lot more homes to be built in the future and is already kind of busting at the seams and expanding the population of Rising Sun each school year. So...
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this. Aye?
Aye.
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 It passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin.
Sorry. Moving forward, town administrator, do you have anything else on your report? No? Okay, thank you. We're going to move into the Historical Preservation Commission report. No report this evening. Any old business tonight? Hearing none. Any new business? Hearing none. Commissioners' comments? We'll start with Commissioner Althanreth.
Got a few small things here tonight. This month's planning and zoning meeting that was scheduled for last Monday, we had members who were not able to attend, so we've had to reschedule for this coming Monday. Is that the 29th?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're rescheduled for the 29th on the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. After the last meeting, I met with our Public Works Director, Ron Thomas, and talked about some things that we could do, upcoming projects that we're trying to work with, with the weather, what we're getting ready for, for the winter, to set in on us this year in case it comes early after what happened to us last year. A few of the things they've got going on now, because they've been doing a lot of work down at the Two Parks and the Dog Park, and those guys done a lot of work down there for us at that Dog Park. And man, we had a blast down there, watching all those dogs play. It was like watching kids get into a park. They just, yeah, and they just ran like crazy, and Travis had a blast with them. But they're going to be doing, Ron and the Public Works guys have got some potholes on Wilson Road and Pearl Street that they're working on. We also talked about a section of Pearl Street that is deteriorating on one side that we want to try to do something with, hopefully before winter, where the top coat of about an inch is peeling off and the water is able to get up underneath of it. There's a sidewalk driveway apron on that street that a resident contacted me about a couple of months back that has, it's a real safety issue. It's got rebar sticking out, and they're going to work on that coming up. I have a meeting next week I'm going to attend. Mayor, I got a letter passed on from you about the Department of Transportation's Capital Program Tour Meetings. It's concerning the Consolidated Transportation Program and the Transportation Infrastructure Investment Act of 2013. I'll be attending that at the Elkton Government Building next, the 30th, at 10:30 a.m. And we'll find out what direction that MDOT's thinking about going that could help us up here. Another thing that I hope I can report on here without any problem is we've been awarded through the Will Mapco and the Maryland Bike Waits Program, there is going to be some bicycle routes marked off on state roads, 273 and 274, that the state and county are going to do the painting. They're going to give us some signage and also some bike racks that we can install, and we're getting quite a few. So part of our commitment to this is to use our labor to install the signs, install the bike racks, and then after that, maintain them. And I think that is really going to help bring some business into town, because one thing we found over the past few years of attending Maryland Planning Commissioners Association is bicycle groups are always looking for new places to travel and places to go and seek out. When they get there, they usually have some discretionary money to spend to eat. If there's a place to shop, that usually draws them, and they need a place to park their bikes. So we're going to be going over a plan that the county gave me, along with our Public Works Director, to start looking at placements of bicycle racks, and hopefully, we can get some of those installed, at least get that program started before it gets too cold and the bicyclist stop riding. But anybody goes out, you know, there's a lot of bicyclists in the county. One of our local residents here is an avid bicyclist, and we hope that we see him out there. I know he's had a little trouble with his health, but we hope to see him out there being some of the first to use it. And I think that's all I got tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. I did want to reiterate one thing that Commissioner Althanreth said, which is, I wanted to say a big thank you to our Public Works Director, Ron Thomas, and our Public Works crew. They worked tirelessly to get Triangle Dog Park ready for the opening, and there were a lot of things that were put on hold, unfortunately, on Commissioner Althanreth's agenda to serve the Parks Department and to get this park up and running. So I'm very thankful to them for doing that. Moving forward, we're going to move into Commissioner Walker's, no, excuse me, Commissioner Scully's comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I, my voice is shaking, it's because it's cold in here, and I see the residents are appropriately dressed in jackets and sweatshirts, and I am not, so I will try to get through this without my voice shaking. On the body cameras for officers, I just wanted to provide a brief update that the specific equipment really has not been finalized yet, but with the support garnered from the last meeting, the chief is looking into that, and then we will move into application for the grant, and then come back to the board with, with the specific information. On addiction and domestic abuse awareness campaign, the chief gave me a great recommendation to meet with April Foster and Carrie Miller of STEPS, which is Recovery Resources Program. We had a really great conversation, and I would like to partner with them in helping us with that campaign. I wanted it to be a very simple campaign, which I have a proposal written for, but I really like their input as well, since they're, you know, deep into these issues. And we have a meeting next week, this is Recovery Month, and they had a very busy schedule as well as I did. So, we're going to meet next week, and at that time, I'll finalize a proposal, and we'll just start that awareness campaign and share it with all. I want to also jump on the bandwagon on community policing, again, asking for the public's help. And the mayor recently brought this up in his topic on the weekly Mayor's Corner in The Guardian, which I believe preceded the vandalism in the, in the park. We need residents to work with the officers, and the chief has been constantly advocating for this. The other comment that I want to make is that Commissioner Warnock, you know, he voiced his concerns and his anger over, you know, senseless vandalism, and, you know, it does anchor people with the investment that the town makes in the parks. And one of the suggestions he made was, clearly, the town can put out a reward to find out who did this, but, you know, possibly amnesty, and I think that demonstrates a great deal of compassion on his part to even suggest that. And I know that this group has a compassionate heart to find out not only who did it, but to, but to offer, you know, for someone to either pay restitution or do community service, there's clearly a lot of things can be done in town. I think this is, while that is very generous, and the board hasn't really talked about it, I don't disagree with that as an option. And when it comes to community policing, I hope that would encourage somebody to provide information. If it were, and I'm making an assumption that it would be a minor person that would, would have done this, an opportunity to change the direction of a child that might be headed for, you know, bigger trouble in their future. And just reiterate that our officers are very adept at talking, talking with our youth, making a difference with them while holding them accountable for decisions that they make. I think the generosity of, you know, providing community services an option to a harsher accountability would really possibly turn, turn the corner for somebody that, that needs it. But I also would have to say, that's probably a door that probably wouldn't be open for very long. So, I would encourage anybody that has information about that to come forward, even if they don't know exactly who it is, but they might have some information related to it. I know our officers would be open to hearing that. And again, for a limited time period, demonstrating that compassion to try and help somebody that, that, you know, might need that, and teach them possibly some skills that will help them in the future. So, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Scully. One thing I would add on to that is also that you're not hurting this elected body. As much as I would love to go and enjoy that playground set, it's a little too small for me. But you are hurting the kids of our residents here. You're hurting people that come and visit our parks here, that want to come and enjoy them. You're not hurting us. You're not hurting our police department. We do parks and recreation to provide things for our residents to do, for their children to be able to enjoy, and we want our parks to stay nice. So, if you have any information, like reiterating what Commissioner Scully, and I'm sure what Commissioner Warnock will say also, is say something. So, Commissioner Walker.
I'm very happy to report that I have nothing to report.
Thank you for that long-winded report, Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Warnock.
I have actually quite a bit on the report, so I'll take up all of Commissioner Walker's time and then all mine. We had the opening of the dog park. I'm, you know, the mayor's already gone into that. I'm not going to go into that too much more, other than to say that I do appreciate all the hard work that a lot of people have put into that, whether it be the town administrator, a lot of efforts that he put into it, the Public Works. I mean, all, we had all hands on deck, the entire Public Works Department down there the day before, getting the grass ready, you know, finalizing just little details to make sure that everything was all set. And even the mayor of the town of Rising Sun down there, painting last little details that had to be completed. As well as the dog park, we had our yoga in the park on the 19th, if, if Lisa could keep a straight face. And it went off well. There were probably about 10 or so people that showed up for that. I'd like to thank Ms. Endono Garvin for pulling it off, and she's interested in continuing that in the spring, so we'll see where that goes. Saturday, we had the Adult Education Watershed Stewards Academy came out and looked over the environmental portion of the dog park, and they discussed, you know, some of the projects and how happy that Oktaa Watershed is with, you know, how the, the stormwater management and such has turned out there. And I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was actually a pretty staggering amount of nitrates and nutrients and such that were going to be removed from the runoff every year. I mean, the numbers were actually, it was like 37 pounds of nitrates, which I don't even know how you weigh nitrates, but I guess, guess you can. And then, like, three tons of silt, which really got me. I don't know where, I mean, I guess it'll just completely fill in or something. I mean, three tons seems like an awful lot of silt, but nonetheless, they, some of the, I mean, just amazing numbers that'll be filtered out through that project. I guess Saturday, or Sunday night, I think, yeah, Sunday night, I met with Robbie James and Adam Parrott, our two Boy Scouts that are going to be working on the boardwalk and environmental learning deck. They should be submitting a plan within the next, probably about three weeks, that I'll sign off on, and the, once they'll, they'll submit to their committee, which, once they have their sign off, they'll be starting to commence work at the park. So, hopefully, within about a month or so, we should start seeing some work underway, or at least some planning and such underway, maybe some, some digging and some initial prep work to, to get things ready to start building it, probably either late this, you know, fall into the winter, or possibly, you know, early next spring. So, they're going to, you know, be busy working on that here soon. The, I think, last meeting, I mentioned that we would be introducing an Arts Council. We have that resolution pretty well ready. I haven't had a chance to, you know, discuss it with the rest of the board yet and kind of see if anybody had any thoughts on it, but we'll be hopefully bringing that up October 14th meeting, so. And finally, the vandalism at Richardson Park, very disappointed about that. I mean, it, they, the, basically, the spiral sliding board at Richardson Park was damaged. We're in the process right now of trying to figure out, you know, how much it's going to cost and such to get it repaired. It's the, you know, the kids of the community, it's the younger kids that are impacted most by it, and secondarily, the taxpayers of the town, which include, you know, all of us too. So, you know, and more than, I, I have to believe that it was probably a minor that did the damage. Suspect there's a fair chance that they, you know, their parents may be taxpayers in the town. So, you know, they're hurting themselves by, by that kind of vandalism. As was alluded to, you know, one of the discussions I had with the chief was, you know, I, I want to kind of get to the bottom of this. I, you know, I don't want to continue to see things vandalized. You know, is there a better way to try and tackle these? I mean, is there, you know, can we do something new and innovative here? And I don't know if it's entirely innovative, but, you know, the thought came to me of like a one-time, and I, the best word I could come up with was like an amnesty for a limited window till basically, you know, Friday of this week closes business. If the person or persons who did the damage come forward, or their parents, that we will not prosecute them. And the chief, I believe, was okay with, you know, the not going forward of that, out of prosecution. They would, you know, they would have to, they'd have to make a public apology. They, we would expect them to make some amends through some sort of restitution, but that they would save themselves the route of criminal prosecution, that if we receive information between now and Friday, I, as to who did it from other sources, I would like to hold on to that and allow them to come forward and admit they did it. And, you know, after that, we'll use whatever tools are necessary to prosecute to the full extent of the law. So, and that's, that's, I'm hoping that we can give somebody a chance to think about what they've done and basically avoid a criminal prosecution, avoid a record, a juvenile record, I assume. And this would be if the person's juvenile. I think if they're an adult, we, we're dealing with something entirely different. I'm, I'm not willing to, I mean, if you're over 18, you're still vandalizing sliding boards, you know, you probably need to deal with criminal justice system, so. But I think that's the extent of my report, and I, you know, appreciate everybody's willingness to go along with this little social experiment, I suppose. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Peterson, do you have a comment to make?
Yes. I would like to add to what Commissioner Warnock has said. We do get information. It's slowly coming in, so that amnesty may run out. You might want to act quickly, but we are getting some information.
Thank you, Chief Peterson. And Commissioner Warnock, any other business to come forward, the board this evening?
I, there was one other thing. I just realized on that, but it slipped my mind that quick while we were talking about it. I forgot, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, that's, that's all right. Commissioner Warnock, any-
Guys my age that do that.
I know, exactly. Any more business to come forward, the board this evening? Hearing none, can-
Tom?
Can I just ask a question, pause, Commissioner?
Sure.
Certainly.
Is there going to be a canopy on the large dog side in the dog park?
I believe the canopy, I mean, the canopy system that we have down there is probably about the extent of it. I think, does it extend a little?
Yeah, it extends into the large and small dog.
Apparently, it doesn't extend far enough, and there's no seating on the large side, am I correct?
No, there isn't.
There's a bench underneath the canopy on that side, yeah.
Well, there was two elderly ladies who had large dogs inside the small dog area sitting under the canopy on Sunday when I came back from Pittsburgh.
Really?
I don't think we have our, do we have our rules posted?
Yeah, we have our temporary rules board. We're waiting on our graphic designer to finish the permanent rules board, but-
I just ask you to take, take another look at the amount of shade that might be on that side, because it appeared to me that there was no shade on the large park side, and that may have been the reason they put their dogs over.
It could be also as the sun is moving across, you know, during certain times of the day, shade's going to shift.
I just didn't notice the canopy extending that far.
Yeah, it definitely does, and-
I was going a little faster than you could see that.
Take note of that, Chief.
Any more business coming forward to the board this evening? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.